I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held September twentieth, twenty sixteen, at six o'clock to order. Deputy Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Haughey.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
And here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
And Mayor Jones is absent.
Pledge of Allegiance is the next thing on the list. Dr. C., can you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge of allegiance is that I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which this is made, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number four is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless a specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. City Manager.
Madam Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, just a couple of updates. If you've been by the airport, the reconstruction of the apron is underway and moving right along. We'll soon be seeing the restroom projects start and probably see the Kid's Park get underway first, probably Garrison, and then the remodel of the softball field. We're also doing some work on the Civic Center, and that'll be closed September thirtieth through October second. We're testing the ceiling to see how much it can hold and also what it's made of, so that'll be moving along. And just a point of pride, Rudy was recently down at a statewide sci-tech conference, and we were recognized again as a town that, or city, that does it right. For a rural community, we probably lead the state in terms of putting together a really great sci-tech conference, so my thanks to Rudy, since he's kind of the one that leads the charge on this and does a great job. So, thanks, Rudy. That's it.
Counsel, Mr. Pratt.
Yeah, I had the pleasure again of being the emcee for a great event in Cottonwood this weekend, the Thunder Valley Rally, and pleased to report there were no problems. I met so many people who had a great time, people from all over Arizona, as well as out of state. And again, I think it's interesting that it was a real group effort. There was a committee that met for almost a year to put it together, and everything I heard from folks was it was well organized, they enjoyed it, and I think some credit goes to certainly the City Manager for freeing up some of the employees to help with it, a lot of our supporters. And there's one guy who never takes any credit, but he really deserves it, even though it's a team effort. He leads the team, and that's Hezekiah Allen of Parks and Recs, and the guy just works his tail off to make it a successful event, and he was here all weekend, and it was just nice to have that many people in town, and I was amazed at the amount of money that the ATM dispensed, which gets spent in Cottonwood. So, it's a great economic driver as well.
I attended a SOAR meeting, and the SOAR meeting, I'm not going to break down the acronym because I can't figure it out. It has to do with homeless people and getting them some Social Security Disability benefits to get them off the streets. I thought it was a great organization, and if anybody's interested, you can contact Catholic Social Services. They have a group there that'll help you out.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Introduction of new employees. Is that, who's introducing the, Baron?
Good evening, Carolyn. We have a new employee, it's been more than a month now, she's with us, and she's shy. We always had an admin position in the Planning and Zoning Department, and over the years, that position was shared for other duties. Now, we promoted existing position to planning technician, so admin position was vacated. Carolyn applied for this position, and we are very happy to have her in our department, and I will turn it to her to introduce herself to you.
Thank you, Baron. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Carolyn Patengill, and I am the Administrative Assistant for Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. I'm very thrilled to be here. I'm not originally from Cottonwood. I've spent some of my life in Michigan originally, moved up to Phoenix in the seventies, so I saw Phoenix when it was very small. Also, spent some time in Nebraska, but have now moved back to Arizona and Cottonwood, hopefully here to stay. It's a lovely community, so I'm very thrilled to be here and be part of the community.
Well, welcome.
Welcome, yes.
Thank you.
Number six, call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding any, an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to five, a five-minute time period. Anybody call to the public? So, the next one is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We've got one. Resolution number twenty-eight fifty-five, appointing Albert C. Hillberger, a member of the Industrial Development Authority Board. And who does, oh, it's consent. Any questions from the council or anybody in the audience? Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pratt moved the first, and Ms. Allen the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? City Assistant City Clerk, would you please read twenty-eight fifty-five?
Resolution number twenty-eight fifty-five, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Albert C. Hillberger, a member of the Industrial Development Authority Board for the City of Cottonwood, and establishing his term of office. Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Thank you. Okay, new business. Resolution number twenty-eight fifty-six, appointing a member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Najad.
Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, Planning and Zoning Commission is made of seven, made of seven members, and Ray Cox, who has resigned from this position, who happened to be an architect, this position doesn't have to be an architect, but per zoning ordinance, we prefer someone with design background. And after advertising, we received two applications, one of them from Robert Alexander Hart, and second one is from John Peterkin, and I'm assuming that they are in the audience, and I would like to turn it to them.
Okay, council. Would you like each one of them to come up and say something?
Yes.
First, Robert.
Good evening. My name is Robert Hart. I'm a retired architect from California. We've been residents here in Arizona for about five years, mainly in Cottonwood. In that five years, I've been pretty impressed with the way the city's run, and I was hoping to find a way to take part. I have experience doing city planning work. I've completed two contracts successfully overseas where I was working with the U.S. military, one in Turkey at a place called Insolit, and the second one in Seoul. A major part of that work was city planning work. In Insolit, basically, working with the city planner, we were redesigning the base because they had facilities scattered all over, and we were trying to consolidate, and we ended up coming up with a successful plan that the Colonels finally agreed to. I was just hoping that I could take part and help here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for applying. And Mr. Pedican?
Peter.
Peter.
Hello.
Peterkin.
I think some of you might recognize me. I've lived here for about twenty-one years, and I'm an archaeologist. I work for the Forest Service on a seasonal basis, but I've lived in Old Town for twenty-one years now. And I was approached by a few friends of mine who said, "There's nobody from Old Town on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We need somebody to represent Old Town on the commission." So, I decided it was time for me to step up and do something about it, and that's what I would like to do. I've been wanting to participate. My job has kept me out of town until recently, and so now I'm more, more local, so I can, I can be here on a regular basis. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Pedican? Any questions for Mr. Hart? Okay, I'll open it for, thank you so much for applying for discussion. Ms. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, once again, we have a tough choice to make because we have two applicants for one position, and I appreciate both applicants stepping up. I just want to say, though, I am really impressed with Mr. Hart's background and his experience in planning, and it just seems to me that that's, he's very well qualified for the position.
I'd have to agree.
Okay. Ed, do you have anything, any input? Okay. Do I have a motion? Baron, do you have anything more to say? Okay, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve Resolution number two-eight five-six, appointing Robert Hart, a member of the City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission, for the remainder of a three-year term that expires December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Pratt, seconded by Ms. Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion moves. Okay, Ms. So.
Resolution?
Yes, right there. Deputy Attorney? City, City Manager? Okay, I'll get it right yet. Would you please read Resolution number twenty-eight fifty-six?
Resolution number twenty-eight fifty-six, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Robert Hart, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing his term of office.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Hart. Okay, next on the agenda, proposed award of contracts for job order contracting services. Mr. Biggs.
Vice Mayor, Counsel, good evening. In June twenty sixteen, staff issued a request for statements and qualifications to provide the city with underground job order contracting services for various utility and public work department projects. The intent of this solicitation was to enter into three new agreements for contractors to participate in the city's JOC program. The solicitation was published in the newspaper in consecutive weeks, posted on public purchase, as well as the city website. Six completed responses were received by the deadline. The review committee consisted of city staff, a licensed engineer, and a senior staff member of a contracting company. Scoring the proposals per the criteria established in the solicitation, and the cumulative scores resulted in the three top-ranked contractors to be Tiffany Construction, Kenny Construction Services, and Mulcare &amp; Sons Contracting. The city's JOC program has established, or has accomplished, numerous projects over the years, road construction, sewer and water line installations, building demolitions, emergency repairs. This is a beneficial program to the city, has allowed the departments to accomplish and to deliver their respective projects in very efficient and cost-effective manner. This evening, I ask council to review and award the contracts for JOC to Mulcare &amp; Sons Contracting LLC, Kenny Construction Services, and Tiffany Construction Company. Any questions?
Mr. Pratt?
As I said, the comment, I'm familiar with the work of all three. I believe they've all done work for the city before, and their reputations precede them, and they've always done good workforce, and they've been involved in a lot of local projects.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel? I like the way we do it now. It makes it a whole lot cleaner and more efficient. It's a good way to do it.
Good program.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Allen?
I move to approve the contracts resulting from the job order contracting solicitation to Mulcare &amp; Sons Contracting LLC, Kenny Construction Services Incorporated, and Tiffany Construction Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Number three, encroachment agreement to allow the construction of overhanging balconies, decks, deck slash decks for the commercial slash residential buildings that are part of a Lehman LLC project located at nine-twenty North Main Street in Old Town.
The main.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, Counsel. This is the Le Main Development. It is a new development here in Old Town at nine-twenty North Main Street. It's just down the road here between Pema and Penal. There's a vacant lot currently here. They're going to develop this lot and this one on Cactus as well. What they're seeking is approval to allow decks to overhang the city right-of-way, similar to what the Tavern, Grill, and Hotel currently do. They're rezoning the property from C-one to P-A-D. It's a very small infill development project, point one acres between the two lots itself. The decks are only going to be on the Main Street building, not on the Cactus Street building, will all be on the property itself. They're proposing the decks to overhang on the, on Main Street front edge. They're going to be about nineteen feet, eight inches long. They're going to project five feet out from the building above the sidewalk. The alley would be projecting three feet into the alley. Here's kind of a side colored view of it here, showing what it's going to look like, projecting on this side here. Again, that's on the Main Street side. That's what the front is supposed to be. There's only going to be one deck on the Main Street side. The third floor is set back so they don't have to overhang as much. And then, the alley, again, is going to be three feet from the building into the alley. You can see it on the side here, again, the Main Street over here. The encroachment agreement has been looked at by both our city attorney and the applicant, and everybody seems to be in agreement on what they'll do. The applicant is here, representative property owner is here, so you answer any detailed questions, if you have any.
Okay, thank you. And where's the applicant? Hi, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'm Steve Biocini. I'm representing the project, Ty Ruben. It's nice to be here, it's nice to see you all. Really, this is a pretty simple situation. On the front side, we're interested in, in both protecting the, providing some cover for the entrance at the lower part of the building on the main floor, and also just to bring some life to the front of these buildings, so they're not, you know, so it's not a facade, and nobody ever sees what's going on in the building. In the rear, it's the same, it's basically the same situation. We're going to connect these two buildings across the alley with an improved paving surface as a part of the alley renovation project, and there are going to be decks on the, on the Cactus building as well as on the alley on the Main Street side, but the, on the Cactus side, they don't approach into the right-of-way. So, this is really just trying to create real pedestrian life and a real residential feel for both the front and rear of Main and the same character as well on Cactus. So, that's the nature of the request. If you've got questions for me, I'd be glad to talk to you about them.
Counsel, have any questions? Anybody in the?
It's a lot different than I expected. I'm glad to see these diagrams here. I hadn't seen anything before, so it explains a lot, so thank you for that.
They're actually lovely. I love the look that you've put in there, and it takes away that static, flat look that you're saying you're trying to get away from. I really like that.
Thanks.
It's a welcome, it really looks good. Anyone in the audience have anything to say, or any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Pratt?
I move to allow overhanging decks above city right-of-way, subject to Planning and Zoning Commission design review approval, approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney, and any additional requirements deemed necessary, reasonable, and appropriate by staff.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Norm, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Ms. Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion passes. Thank you. It's really going to look nice. Okay, we need lights. Okay. Proposed awards of the city's FY twenty-seventeen Building Community Grant Funds. Mr. Rodriguez.
Vice Mayor, Counsel. Just a brief background, Building Community Grants, this is its second year, and in recent years, it was started back in, I think, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. We did it one year, then the economy tanked, and we had to stop it. We're pleased to award the entire fifteen thousand dollars issued that we've set aside for this particular grant. We've got four applicants. There was Steps to Recovery, Matt Force, Angie's House, and we got late submission from Adopt a Vet. The committee is made up of eight members. Council, we have a council member, and we had two council members. We have a council member, a ex-council member, and then we have several citizens involved, and myself, I just moderate. I don't, I don't vote, I just moderate and explain things. After going, after meeting several weeks and going over these particular agreements, the committee decided on two awards rather than just one. They disqualified Steps to Recovery only because the, the original, the original policy says that they must wait, they must, can be awarded on a three-year cycle, meaning they would, they got some money last year, they wouldn't be available for another two years. And they disqualified Adopt a Vet because they were late in submission. But they still had Matt Force and Angie's House, which were two fairly good submissions. Matt Force was, was excellent. Angie's House, Angie's House was good, and that helped determine how much money we were going to go ahead and fund. But, you know, when we sat down, we started going over all of these applications, there was a couple of suggestions that were made by the committee before I make the request for funding. They suggested that we kind of improve the program, the marketing of the program a little bit more, not just word of mouth or an ad, but we'll, we'll be starting up a little bit sooner than we have in the past, and we're going to look at, at alternatives to marketing this particular program. We get more and more applicants for it. They wanted us to develop a template, so applicants knew how to submit, rather than just getting an application, just starting to fill it in. They wanted something that had a template that they could look at and say, "Hey, this is kind of the model we're looking for." They wanted us to meet, have a pre-bid meeting with all the program applicants, so we can go ahead and give them the ground rules. Obviously, when we started looking at this, the, three of the four applicants were not necessarily program-oriented, they were more maintenance and operation-oriented, and the actual program is supposed to be for one-time program-type things, not necessarily maintenance and operations. So, they wanted to make sure we talked about that, about the delays, how to submit, so forth. So, there was, there was a couple of things, a number of things that they wanted us to do. And then, lastly, they, they suggested to make sure that we started the application process, and this is my fault, a lot sooner than we did this last year, and possibly keep the committee we've had this year and continue them from year to year, so they can continue making improvements to the program. With that being said, the committee is recommending that we award the full amount of ten thousand six hundred and seven dollars to Matt Force, and the remaining balance of four thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars to Angie's House for their particular programs. And Adopt a Vet will be still qualified to submit next year since they didn't get funded, and of course, Steps to Recovery will have to wait another two years before they actually are eligible for funding. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Comments?
Comments?
No, I thought, I thought Matt Force's submission was extremely good, extremely detailed, didn't leave anything to question as to what exactly they were using the funds for. My only regret is that we didn't have more money so we could give more to Angie's House, but we got that to you, and I thought they did a good job.
Any other comments from the council? How about anybody in the audience? Would Dr. C. or Angie, would you all like to make some comments? I knew I shouldn't have given him a mic.
Well, I'm here to express my gratitude on behalf of the Board of Directors, Marla Lee Fowler, and all the members of Matt Force. We'll continue to do what we've been doing. I will tell you this, that I started my day at eight o'clock this morning at the Greater Sedona Substance Abuse Committee meeting, and I'm finishing it here today, accepting this on behalf of Marla Lee Fowler. She's out of town, and that's why I'm here. But we will put the money to good use, as you know, and try to do the best we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you all do.
I'm ecstatic. I'm so grateful.
The mic done.
So, thank you, I'm ecstatic. I'm grateful that it's going to be able to do so much, so thank you very much, because it really is something that's really working with the homeless shelter right now. We've served one hundred and ninety-four separate individuals since November, and this is just going to get better and better. So, thank you so much, we will use it wisely. Thank you.
They're already out there looking for homes tonight. They're camping all over town, from what I understand. We saw a couple of them.
Yeah, they're probably gonna be hanging that way, but it was before six.
Yeah, they probably would be heading that way if it was before 6:00.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we need a motion. Anybody else have anything to say about it? They're two wonderful programs. Of course, I'm part of Matt Force. I'm on the steering committee with Matt Force. So I'm happy to see them get some of the money, and Angie does wonderful work with the people out there. Dr. Bart...
Yeah, I would add that Angie has been an integral part of our new alternative sentencing program. So that's been very helpful as well. So definitely endorse supporting Angie's House.
Yeah, it's a great organization.
Need for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the staff and committee recommendation to award building community grants in the amounts of $10,607 to Matt Force and $4,393 to Angie's House, Inc.
Second. Moved by Ms. Norman, seconded by Mrs. Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, counsel.
Thank you. Number five, lease extension for the Old Town Jail located at 10, at 1101 North Main Street. Who's handling this?
We're going to be tabling it.
We're going to, yeah. Okay, it's been decided to table this for more information, so is that all right with the rest of the council?
That's fine.
Mr. Bartosz? I thought you were raising your hand.
No, I just, I wanted to tell the council that I'll be contacting the person who's interested in the lease and making sure that we're meeting her needs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number six. Authorization to proceed with the proposed annexation of portions of 13 residential properties that are currently partially within Yavapai County. This is a wild one, isn't it?
This is Verdi Village, Unit 8, boundary correction annexation. So this case is a little bit different than regular annexations. Again, originally, when the city was incorporated in 1960, city boundaries were established. And in 1971, when this subdivision was platted, and it just went over, somehow it was missed, and over the city boundary. This is Verdi Village 8 area, and where First Street goes this way. And here, this is a city boundary, but somehow, when Unit 8 came, all these housings went over the city boundary. So as you see, some of these lots, they are half of it is in the county, half of it is in the city. And this is the aerial, First Street. Then I'll go into details of these.
Oh, my goodness.
This is how it shows, actually, even though it is a straight line. After the plating, this was the problem area. So what is happening now, we have, we would like to correct this problem, and it brought to our attention again from the assessor's office, which has been going on more than 45 years. And we have 13 properties in subject. Some of, out of 13, six of them are already in the city, considered in the city. But if this doesn't show much, but the line goes through this way. So in order to have this annexation, we have to have 51% of the property owners agree to that. So from that calculation, we need one more property owner agree to annex. So what will this do us? Instead of now the assessor's office just calculating half of it in the city, half of it in the county for property taxes? Or it's going to help with the voting, actually, the problem came up from that. Am I in the city or am I in the county? So staff is asking tonight, City Council's authorization staff to go forward with this annexation process. After tonight, we have an annexation calendar, which will start a 30-day period next. And we will be filing a petition to county's recorder's office. And after waiting for 30-day period, we will have a public hearing on October 20. Then it starts a one-year, not waiting period, one year for these property owners to sign that petition. We're collecting that signature. Again, this is such a small scale of annexation. Again, out of 13, six already in the city. So we would like these property owners either come and sign this, and if it is necessary, we can go door-to-door after tonight's approval, and then we can start the process. Even though it is one year, if we have 51%, quickly, we can process that and clear it up before one year ends.
Good.
Madam Vice Mayor, just in the interest of a little more background on this, this was brought to us, as Ms. Najad said, a couple of years back. And it was really an issue for the assessor's office because I don't know what tax bill they were sending them, but obviously, the tax, property tax in Cottonwood is different than it is in the county, predominantly having to do with the cost of the fire district. And so they needed to get this cleaned up. There really isn't a legal way for the city to de-annex properties, that I'm aware of. And so consequently, the only option was, if it stayed the way it is, they would have to send the property owners two bills. One bill for the city side, one bill for the county side. So they asked the city if we would be willing to pursue the annexations, and our staff has worked on this diligently for quite a while, even to the point of our former police chief going out and asking people to, you know, annex into the city because, in the interest of straightening this out. So this is the solution that makes the most sense, and not only in terms of the tax issues, but this has always created issues for our public safety personnel as well because they never are sure whether it's in the city or in the county, and who should respond. And this will clarify all of that as well.
And where do they vote, city or county?
Well, that's a good question, yeah. It creates a lot of issues that hopefully this will clean all that up.
Wow. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, it does say this was precipitated in part by people inquiring where they were supposed to vote. And people looked at it and said, "I'm not sure." Seems to me that this is good for the city. Also, it seems like it's a very good thing for the residents. They will, they'll get better emergency service, and it just seems like one of those no-brainers.
I knew we couldn't get through a meeting without that.
Yeah, we've got to have at least one.
Anybody out in the audience have any questions?
Just Madam Vice Mayor, just so you know, the legal effect of what you're doing tonight is you're authorizing staff to file a blank petition, and that will begin the, there's a waiting period and then a signature gathering process so that you will see this again.
Yep. Probably a few times. Do I hear a motion, Mr. Pratt?
Yes, I move to authorize staff to proceed with the annexation of portions of 13 properties along the city's southwest boundary.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Ms. Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
I move, we pay the claims.
I'll say, okay. Ms. Allen made the motion. Ms. Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll pay the claims. And I move to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Wow.